If I could ask, if I could ask the board members to take their seats, please. I'd like to open the meeting. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start the, tonight's agenda with reading of the Sunshine Law. Adequate notice of the organizational meeting set for time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirement of the Open Publics Meeting Act on January 13, 2023, and January 27, 2023, by prominently posting a copy of the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, Dewayne today, and a municipal clerk. If you could please rise for a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) ... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Thank you. Moving on to the official results. My office as Board Secretary received a confirmation from the County of Passaic Office of County Clerk. The official election results, I'll read the top three vote getters. First is Donald Pavlak at 6,619 votes, and Mr. Mark Farber, 6,125, and Wendy Lemandry, 6,037 votes. This will be part of the record today's meeting. I'll now ask the newly elected board members to come forward in alphabetical order to receive the oath of office. If we can gather in front of the podium and organize ourselves, please feel free to bring family and friends up that you feel you would like to have swear in with you. And again, I'll ask Mr. Faber to approach, and I'll meet you out there.
You want me to direct?
No, no. Do you want to hold it? Don't I have to put a hand on the Bible and hold up my other hand?
It's up to you.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Thank you.
You hold that, and you hold this. Okay, man, I can hold this up to my face. Go.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mark Faber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mark Faber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of Board of Education.
I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed.
I'm not disqualified due to a conviction of crime or offense listed.
In NJSA 18A:12-1.
In NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All of the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
I'll take that. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Wendy Lemandry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. I, Wendy Lemandry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter, yeah, voter.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Donald Pavlak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, state your name.
I, Donald Pavlak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
For the office of Member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Nor disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJS 18A:12-1.
Listed in NJS 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just a couple housekeeping items in the package you have in front of you. You have paper ballots, one for both the Board President and one for Board Vice President. At this point in the agenda, we'll be moving into nominations. We'll be using that to vote. So I will open the floor to nominations for Board of Ed President. Mrs. Rigoloso?
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the floor. So you can use your ballots to mark a checkbox. You see, all the individuals on the board are present, and you could either mark it with a check, or if you will vote no, that's fine as well. And please note, you'll sign it, and Mrs. Lydic will be there to pick them up. Before I read the results, I'm remiss, I need to take a roll. So I will officially take a roll for the record. Mr. Batusheo?
Here.
Mr. Faber?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Lemandry?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mr. Prasakos?
Present.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Here.
Mrs. Wentec?
Present.
First vote is for Mr. Pavlak. Second vote for Mr. Pavlak. Third vote for Mr. Pavlak. Fourth vote for Mr. Pavlak. Fifth vote for Mr. Pavlak. Sixth vote for Mr. Pavlak. Seventh vote for Mr. Pavlak. And the final vote is for Mr. Pavlak. Congratulations, Mr. Pavlak. At this time, I'll take nominations for Vice President. Mrs. Wentec?
I would like to nominate Mr. Prasakos for Vice President. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close nominations. Will call Mr. Moffitt? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Please vote for one. Yes. Sorry. First vote for Mr. Prasakos. Second vote for Mr. Prasakos. Third vote for Mr. Prasakos. Fourth vote for Mr. Prasakos. Fifth vote for Mr. Prasakos. Sixth vote for Mr. Prasakos. Seventh vote for Mr. Prasakos, and the final vote is Mr. Prasakos. Congratulations. It's time I call on our Board Attorney, Mr. Geppert, to go over our annual Ethics Regulations. In your package, you'll also find a form that you'll need to sign, and Mrs. Lydic will pick up at the conclusion of the presentation. Mr. Geppert?
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure tonight to talk to you about ethics. I hope that this is helpful to you. Feel free to ask me questions at any time later in the evening or any time throughout the year. I want everybody to be comfortable with this area. Initially, I'd like you to know that there is a School Ethics Commission down in Trenton, and there's a great body of law, statutes, and regulations that govern this area. So I've given you quite a bit of information, which you can read at your leisure. I'm going to summarize it tonight to hit the highlights for you. The main thing I want to let you know is the two statutes that are there, 18A 12 hyphen 24.1, known as the Code of Ethics. We'll be going over them briefly tonight. There's also a statute, 18A 12 hyphen 24, which deals with conflicts of interest, which also is important. Now, anyone can file a complaint down with the School Ethics Commission, so you need to keep that in mind. That's part of why we try to make sure that we do things appropriately here. It may be filed by anyone. It has to do with past conduct, and these complaints and the decisions are published by the School Ethics Commission. So it's important to know that this is all public. The penalties for violating the Act, what happens is the commission will decide what they think it is to recommend it to the commissioner, and they can either be a reprimand, it could be censure, it could be a suspension, or it actually, in some instances, could be a removal from the board. One separate statute I want you to be aware of is inconsistent interests. Unfortunately, sometimes board members get in trouble with this. It's 18A 12 hyphen 2, and it's specific in saying, "No member of any board shall be interested directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the board." So it's important to know that you can't sit on the board if you have a contract with the board or you have a claim against it. And the courts have found that that even relates to a tort claim notice, that even just the filing of a tort claim notice can create that inconsistent situation for you. So just wanted to put that on your radar screen there. Now, the Act itself, the general provision there, "Board members and administrators have to avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust or creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated." So that's the general standard that we have there. Then there are 10 different principles in the statute, which we call the Code of Ethics, that you have to be careful about. The first one, number A, deals with, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures." And just so you know, the statute does require that each year, the board goes through these 10 provisions here, and then certifies that they have discussed them. So that's part of why we're going through it this evening. I've given you to read at your leisure a case for each one of these points, so it'll explain a little bit, putting flesh on the bones, as to what's going on. In this first one here, the individual was found to violate, where they voted on a resolution to send districts to a former receiving district, even though the commissioner had told them that they couldn't. The SEC found that they violated two Department of Education directives, as well as guidance from the county superintendent. By doing that, the board member, by going against those directives, was found to be in a conflict of interest. Section B, this one talks about, "I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing." Now, there's not a great deal of case law in this area. The one that does exist here says a board member was found not to violate Section B, where they made remarks that a public commenter was delusional and had a mental condition. Now, this was inappropriate comments. The commission said that, you know, obviously, they could be liable in other areas of the law, but it didn't technically violate subsection B. Now, turning on to C, this says, "I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." So this is important to realize, that as a board member, there are some restrictions on you. This is a surprise sometimes to some board members, but there are a great deal of laws and regulations that do prescribe what you can and can't do. And here, it says, "The board is basically tuned in to policymaking, planning, and appraisal." In this situation, it was found that a DARE program officer, who did safety checks of the schools, would be acting beyond the scope of his authority and be in violation if he was both a board member and a DARE program officer. So that was one example of an area where they could get into trouble there. Subsection D, "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run." So the important thing here is that the board members do not administer the school. That's what you have a superintendent and all the other administrators to do. You are sort of a court there, that you're an area that the citizens will appeal to if they disagree what the superintendent is doing with. You also provide the policy and the direction, and you do the evaluation of the superintendent as well. But the statutes and the law have the idea that the board members deal with certain things, and the administration deals with others. The case here, Delbury, that I cite, a board member was found to violate this section when he went around the superintendent and demanded information directly from a district supervisor. The SEC censured that board member. You're supposed to go through the chain of command. We'll talk a little more about that in a second. Section E, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board." So it's important here to realize that you are a collective board of nine members when you are fully staffed. You act as a board. You can't make personal promises or take actions that would compromise the board. Key phrase is there, "compromise the board." We have a case in a minute that I'll talk about that details that a little more. In this case I cite, Mr. Rotis got in trouble here. He took action beyond the scope of his authority by unilaterally issuing a rice notice to the business administrator without notice to the board or the superintendent's recommendation. And he was found to have violated that section. Now, turning to section F, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain for the gain of friends." So of course, here, the idea, you have your own independent judgment, and you shouldn't be doing things for your own personal benefit or to benefit others. And in this case, we found that a board member did not violate this section, where they wrote an article in support of candidates for the Board of Education. Now, there are a couple wrinkles on this that we'll see a little later. Here, they did not get in trouble, because they, it was alleged they used their position to write an article to sway the vote in the incumbent board member's favor. But the commission found this, there was no violation, because the board member wrote it as a private citizen and not a member of the board, and have found it was not violated, because there were no facts alleged in the complaint showing that the person surrendered their independent judgment as a board member to special interests or partisan political groups, or used the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends, when they supported these candidates. Obviously, the disclaimer was important in here. We'll get into that in a little more detail, because there are one or two other cases where board members did get into trouble in this area. So there are certain things that you get into, writing letters to the editor and things of that sort. There are some very clear restrictions on what you have to do there. So section G is a different area. It says, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I'll provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow..." board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the communities for its school." So a couple key buzzwords here that are important. Holding confidential all matters, you'll see when we go into closed session, that's, we go in there for a reason. The legislature and the governor passed the law so that certain areas, attorney-client privilege, personnel matters, contracts, and things of different sort, are not for the public to hear at that point. It's to give the board an opportunity to frankly discuss things and debate what they feel is important. They then come out, and they take a public vote on what they do, and the public has a chance to watch that portion, to make any comments they have, and to go forward. In this situation, the case I cite, Flarus, "A board member violated this subsection when he intentionally forwarded a message to members of his immediate family regarding an incident involving a student which resulted in discipline. The message was subsequently shared with countless others." So you had a board member who received information about a student, shared it with his family members, a son, ended up sending it to people, and it went all over town. This person was reprimanded for doing that. So in section H, "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available, after consideration the recommendation of the chief administrative officer." So the important thing here is you're going to vote on personnel, but what you need to do is consider first the recommendation of the superintendent. The statute says that, and that's the way that the process works. The case that's cited here, "The board member was alleged to have tabled the appointment of the superintendent's recommended candidate for a position in favor of another candidate." The commission concluded, "There's no inherent problem with a board member questioning a hiring recommendation made by the administrative officer, and it's certainly within a board member's right and responsibility to request additional information before voting on such a recommendation." So you don't have to vote yes. You can always vote no, and you can table if you feel that you need to have additional information. But the idea is that you don't act until you've at least considered the recommendation of the superintendent. Now, moving on to I, "I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." The idea is that you stand behind the personnel, the teachers, the people who work so hard in the school district. In this case here that I cite, "A board member criticized the board president on his personal Facebook page, calling the president irrational, unstable, unhinged, and the devil." Now, the commission found that the member actually didn't violate this subsection because the president was not an employee of the district, but rather a member of the board, and the commission did note that the president might have legal recourse in other venues in court. So moving on to J, the chain of command concept here, "I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution." So the idea here is that as a board member, you obviously are interacting with the public. The public comes to you with problems and complaints. The first thing is to go through the chain of command and to give the administration an opportunity to do that. This Quelch case that I cite here, "Board members sent emails to the superintendent, coach, board president, and attorney directing that certain actions be taken by the administration." The commission found that this attempt to conduct an investigation before any administrative action was taken was improperly administering the schools. So that finishes those 10 Code of Ethics. Briefly, I just want to touch on the conflicts of interest. There's the other statute, 18A12-24. This lists, and you can read at your leisure, the relationships and interests, talks about who's a member of the immediate family, the spouse, the relative, the business, and the interests. I also put this chart in here for you, which we can discuss at another time. I think it's a good guide. You'd want to look at this for anyone who has conflicts of interest. Along the left column, the commission has set this out, you have listed the self, the spouse, the dependent child, independent children, and relatives. And then you have two columns where that person's either a member of the local union, working within your school district, or a member of a statewide union. And from there, it raises the questions on whether they're allowed to be in the negotiations with the union, whether they ultimately may vote to ratify the contract, and whether they may participate in issues related to the superintendent. So if any of you have those kind of personal family conflicts, feel free to talk to me about it. We can discuss it. And the simple thing to do here is not to participate, is to recuse yourself and to leave the room if you're involved in those situations. So moving on, subsection A, this talks about, "No school official or member of his family shall have an interest in a business organization or engage in any business which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his duties in the public interest." So it's always the public consideration of what is going on that's important here. And in this advisory opinion, "A board member who owned a private business providing a writing skills course to the district's high school students would violate the subsection if the board member continued to provide services to the community, even if the services were provided pro bono for free." So if you have any business situations, you want to stay clear of that problem. B, "No school official shall use or attempt to use his official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for himself, members of his family, or others." I bring to your attention the two words at the end, "or others," because that is very broad and can be used by the commission to relate to a number of people. In this case here, Weber versus Morgan, "A board member made public comments about a candidate's lawsuit against the board, seeking a board member's official email information. There was an allegation the board member was using the personal email to perform board business. They also attended the executive session meetings. The commission found that the board member's comments regarding the candidate in his lawsuit against the board damaged the candidate's reputation and gave an unfair advantage to other candidates in violation of section B, and members of the public could reasonably believe that they were intending to influence the election of other candidates." So that's an area where you need to be careful. Moving on to C, "No school official shall act in his official capacity in any matter where he, member of the family, or his business, has an interest that might reasonably be expected to impair his objectivity or independence of judgment, and no school official shall act in his official capacity in any matter where he or a member of the family has a personal involvement." So notice that that phrase is broader, "personal involvement," that is or creates some benefit to the school official or member of his family. So this is an important point. In this situation, Brogan was a board member who attended a closed session where Oprah litigation, which she was a party, was discussed. Prior to the closed session, it was announced that the settlement would be discussed. They found that the board member violated the section here, noting that recusal from any and all board discussions, including closed session, when a board member has a conflict of interest, is an absolute requirement. Here, the board member violated that by being involved in the matter. Now, with section D, "No school official shall undertake any employment or service, whether compensated or not," so even if you were doing it for free, "which might reasonably be expected to prejudice the independence of judgment in the exercise of their official duties." The advisory opinion here also has to do with a DARE officer, and it says, "That not all police officers are barred from serving as a board member, but in this instance, the officer's assignments required extensive daily interaction with the schools, and his role here presented an inescapable likelihood of conflicts." Now, section E, this one, "No school official, member of the family, or business shall solicit or accept any gift, favor, loan, political contribution, service, promise of future employment, or other thing of value based upon an understanding that the gift, favor, loan, contribution was given or offered for the purpose of influencing him." They do have a carve-out that this doesn't apply to soliciting or accepting contributions to the campaign of an announced candidate for elective office. In this case, Ms. Rubino got in trouble and violated it. When running for the board, she sent emails soliciting campaign contributions to three district employees at their employee email addresses. Commission said, "You obviously cannot do something like that." They suspended her for six months from her board position. Now, in F, "No school official shall use or allow their office or any information not generally available to the public, which they receive in the course of their business, to secure financial gain for themselves or any member of their family." In this advisory opinion, they determined that a board member would violate the section if she were to serve on a shared services committee which recommends how resources and personnel are shared with the local municipality, where her husband was the mayor. So obviously, that's pretty clear, that you have to stay clear of that kind of situation and recuse yourself. Now, G talks about, "No school official or business organization shall represent any other person or party other than the school board or school district in connection with any cause pending before the board." Now, the interesting point here, the case that came out, "A board member may serve as president of the local PTA, but they have to make sure that they do not represent the PTA before the board on any matter." We get that question from time to time about members of the PTA. President of the PTA, am I allowed to be on the board? The answer is yes. They've dealt with that. So going to section H, "No school official shall be deemed in conflict with these provisions if by reason of his participation in any matter required to be voted upon. No material or monetary gain accrues to him as a member of any business to any greater extent than any gain could reasonably be expected to accrue to any other member of that business." And the advisory opinion that flushes this out says, "A board members whose children attended the high school may discuss and vote on a proposal to give greater weight to more academically challenging courses pursuant to this section," because they would be acting the same as any other parent in the district. But they may not vote on whether to make the proposal retroactive, when the retroactive proposal would give their child a greater benefit. So the facts really matter, and one of the things here the commission will tell you is that different facts can lead to different results. These are general principles, general statutes, but they give us the cases to try to help us understand. Now, in I, "No elected member shall be prohibited from making an inquiry for information on behalf of a constituent." That you're a public person, you try to help the public, you're permitted to do that as long as no fee, reward, or other thing of value is promised to, given, or accepted by the member in return. Therefore, in this case, Cannaby, they found that he violated the Act by sending an email to the superintendent, which was critical of the superintendent's handling of a matter involving the board member's wife. So they crossed the line where they got involved with the superintendent and being critical of a matter involving their wife there. So that's one of the lines where you have to be careful. Now, in J, "Nothing shall prohibit any school official, member, or his family from representing himself or themselves in negotiations or proceedings concerning their own interests." For those board members who have children in the district, you obviously still are a parent, and you have a right to do parental things. In this case with Seale City and Kennedy, went to the New Jersey Supreme Court. Was a special education matter. Board member had a child who was involved with special education, and they found that the board member was not disqualified by filing a due process request. So in filing a due process request having to do with the special education system and the child, that was permissible. However, they got in trouble in this case because the request included a request for specific monetary relief. They wanted a demand for payment to the spouse of the board member for services provided to the son. Supreme Court said, "That steps over the line. Once you start asking for monetary damages or money, then you have a problem as a board I'm going to skip over the next section because that deals just with the School Boards Association. Okay, just a couple cases I wanted to highlight. Treston, 2021. This deals with the disclaimer statement that I mentioned before. A board member was writing on his personal behalf and said that it wasn't on behalf of the board. Still got into trouble because it wasn't sufficient here from them being censured. The content of their statement when endorsing two candidates and speaking out against another went too far. They didn't just say, "I'm endorsing this person. I'm not in favor of this person." The commission concluded, "Even if an appropriate disclaimer is used, a school official must never negate the import of the disclaimer by proceeding to discuss board matters in a way that leads members of the public to believe the individual speaking on behalf of the board." They said, even though they said, "I'm writing on my own, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board," they then went on to talk about so many board members and give so many examples involving the three people who were involved. The commission said, "Any reasonable member of the public reading this would think that you're speaking on behalf of the board and board matters." So that's where I say you have to be very, very careful in how you handle things. The next matter is an advisory opinion. This one I found a little bit unusual, frankly. It just came out in April this year. They said, "A board member would not violate the Act if they were selected as a subcontractor on a project to upgrade tennis courts owned jointly by the township and the board through a shared service agreement." The commission went on to say, "While the board member was permitted to bid on and accept the project should he be selected, the commission noted that the board member would be prohibited from participating in any review, discussion, or selection of the subcontractors, discussion by the board of its agreement with the subcontractor, or payments and furtherance of the agreement." Now, the commission then went on further to say that they recommended the board member refrain from physically performing any of the work. But then, I think surprisingly, they say, "If his physical presence could not be avoided, the board member must be cognizant not to present himself as a board member and cannot exercise any authority over district personnel." So frankly, I just think that's an unusual situation if you have a board member who's bid on a project, is actually out there standing on the grounds of the district, saying, you know, "I'm not acting as a board member." So that's one, I think, is a little bit of a difficult situation. I think I'd be a little uncomfortable going down that road, frankly. So moving on and wrapping up, 1123, "Board member here has a mother-in-law who served as a district paraprofessional, a substitute. They were barred from doing the things that we've talked about before, discussing and voting on matters relating to the superintendent, being involved in the school principal search, being involved in collective negotiations, personnel committee discussions that would affect the mother-in-law, and budget discussions that could affect the mother-in-law." And the next one, the commission advised that a superintendent would violate the Act if he were to recommend his sister-in-law for a position. Now, this is so, even though the sister-in-law was employed in the district before the superintendent came, they said, "No, you can't do this. It would be an advantage to family or others." Now, in this Skoronsky case, the commission determined a board member failed to maintain confidentiality. It's required by the Act when he replied all to an email. So now, dealing with emails as a board member, you have to be careful. This is another area where you could get tripped up. The email contained his opinions on a controversial issue, and it was accidentally sent to a district parent. The board member did not realize that the parent was on the email chain when he replied all, went to all the other board members, but to this individual as well, contained some pretty confidential information. The commission said, because he didn't do it intentionally, they subjected him only to censure, otherwise they would have had a more serious penalty. Now, this new appellate division case that just came down in October, Abadurabo, the appellate division affirmed the commission's ruling that a board member did not violate the Act when they made comments during a board meeting regarding Israel's treatment of Palestinians. So even though this had occurred a couple years ago, this just came out in October, it's noted that the board member stated their views were personal and were not of the board. And the court deemed that this disclaimer was sufficient in this particular instance. It noted that the board's statements did not compromise the board, and the board had a policy permitting board members to express their personal opinions, so long as an appropriate disclaimer was made advising the public the statements were personal, not an official position of the board, there was no violation. Now, on this McVeigh case... Now on this McVeigh case, this is a situation where a board member, children were employed by a district party to ascend-receive agreement. They did not violate the Act by voting on the contract to the shared chief administrator, despite the fact that the superintendent exercised authority over their children. The key point here is that the board member's children were not dependent children, and therefore, the Commission said that's okay, that there's a difference between dependent children and independent children. On the next one, A12-22, this dealt with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education. This decision came out in November 2022, and they pointed back to subsection A about following the laws. And the Commission noted that while there was not currently a final decision on this topic, the failure of a district board to comply with the health and physical education standards could result in such a decision, which could then serve as the basis for concluding that the board member had engaged in a violation of that Act. So I just wanted to share that with you. That had come out recently, and that's a concern. One other thing, board member's social media page. The next situation here with Mr. Leonard, the Commission determined here that when a board member went on his social media page, he violated the Act, even though it was his personal page, and in this situation, he included the disclaimer that, "I'm not speaking, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not on behalf of the board." They concluded that by posting offensive anti-Muslim statements, the board member had engaged in private action that may compromise the board, could be viewed as violating the public trust. Because his term had ended, he could not be removed, but he was subjected to censure. But the Commission was clear that if he was still a board member, they would have removed him. He did make some outrageous comments in this situation, which really, the Commission felt would lead Muslim families to feel that the person was not objective. So 5-23, this is the recent situation involving the board president. If they have children or individuals employed in the district, they cannot select the members of board committees or serve as an ex officio member of any such committee if it remotely touches upon the family member's employment. This includes the Personnel Committee, Negotiations Committee, Instructional Committee, and the Finance Committee, and they advise that the responsibility of appointing committee members would then fall to the vice president. Now, this was a different situation. For 20 years, the Commission had a ruling the opposite way, and just in May of this year, they came down with this situation. Especially for our new board members, I wanted to bring to your attention this Stiefelmann case. Here, a board member was found to violate the Act by individually meeting with complainants to discuss board action. So you have to be careful in this situation when individuals ask you to meet with them and to discuss board business and things that occur. Here, the board member met with the complainants in an attempt, and this was up in Randolph, in an attempt to explain her decision to introduce a walk-on motion to eliminate Columbus Day from the district calendar. The motion resulted in a huge public outcry because of the lack of public vetting of the plan prior to the board taking action. So the Commission explained a little more here in detail on the next one. They said that by attending a meeting with complainants to discuss her actions, the board member had acted beyond the scope of her duties and could have compromised the board. It was concluded that by not referring the complainant's concerns to the administration first, the board member had undermined the administration's authority and ability to potentially resolve or address their concerns. That action had imposed an unnecessary strain and hardship on the relationship between the administration and the board. Additionally, the Commission found that by attempting to explain or rationalize her position and why she made the motion, she was compromising the integrity of the board's decision-making process. So they went back to the standard that people don't act as an individual board member, the board itself acts. It's a collective group of nine, a majority of the board who determines what the board's position's going to be and what you're going to do. This individual got into trouble by going off and meeting separately. I just wanted to conclude, there was an amendment recently in the regulations that said then, for new board members, with your board member training, and we obviously encourage you to go do that because I think you get much more detail from them as to some of the restrictions and roles that you play as a board member. It used to be you had one year to complete the training. The Department of Education has changed that to say that you have to do it within the first 90 days of your first term. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Now, obviously, I've taken a great deal of time. Thank you for everyone for your patience with that, but this is important. And as I said, I'll be glad to talk to you later tonight. I am available at every board meeting, and certainly, if you have a question, my general suggestion to you would be, let's bring it up and let's talk about it. I think that saves you some headaches down the road. The main thing, you think you have a problem, you can recuse yourself, you can step out of the room and not participate in that, and that is one way to be sure that you don't get into trouble. So, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gepper. Mr. Moffett, any revisions to the agenda?
Mr. President, no revisions to report.
Thank you. This time, we'll open to the public on agenda items and general items. This portion of the media is open to citizens for comment on agenda items and general items. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mr. Batterhill. Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Pavlak on his reelection, and Wendy Lamondry and Mark Faber on their elections to the board. Good luck. Now, I noticed there's a vacancy on the board. There's only eight here tonight, there should be nine, and that's because Mike Fatal was elected to the Wayne Municipal Council as third ward councilman, so he had to resign. So I understand it's the board's obligation to choose someone to replace him for his unexpired term, which would take us to the next election. I recommend that the board select Suzanne Putup, who is a previous member of this board. She served on the board for six years. She was in the last November election and came in fourth. So she was not elected, we only elected three in the last election. So she came in fourth out of five people contending for three seats. I think she's highly qualified and would make a good member of the board. With respect to granting the public three minutes to speak, it says here that comments may be limited to three minutes per person. What does that mean? What does the word "may" mean? Does it mean that some speakers can get more than three minutes and other speakers can't get more than three minutes? Or is it a general rule that means that everyone who speaks can only speak for a maximum of three minutes? Also, I think, isn't there a distinction between speaking on agenda items and speaking on general matters? And with respect to agenda items, it's three minutes, and with respect to general matters, it's five minutes? I think tonight, you're combining the two, you're combining agenda, matters, and general items into one session. Finally, I'd like to make a comment about curriculum in the high schools. I think it's important that our juniors and seniors in our high schools learn about the Arab-Israeli conflict, which has been going on for at least the last 75 years, and recently erupted into a full-blown war.
Mr. Frieswick, if you could wrap up?
Yes, I propose that the board establish a policy that in history class in the high schools, that that history of the Arab-Israeli conflict be taught. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Mr. Batterhill?
Second.
Mr. Giordano. We'll move on to our agenda items. Do I have a mover for the agenda? Mrs. Wendtak?
Second.
Mr. Giordano, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Batterhill?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Epstein?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamondry? Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wendtak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any new business? Old business? Board member comments? Mr. Prasakos?
I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and welcome to the new members. We have a lot of work to do, so we're going to jump right in.
Mrs. Wendtak?
Yes, same. I'd like to wish everyone Happy New Year. Thank you for coming and joining us today, and welcome Wendy, Mark, and Don again. It's going to be an exciting year, so I'm really happy and excited, and we're ready to work. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Rigoloso?
Happy New Year, everyone, and I'm so excited to have our newest board members here with us, and we're so excited to get to work for the new school year.
Thank everyone for coming tonight, and I welcome our new board members, your commitment to the community and to the schools. I thank you for that. As said by my colleagues here, put the seatbelt on. We're going to start moving right away. We have a referendum coming up in March, and that is our priority right now, and we'll talk more about that later. I'd like to thank my fellow colleagues on the board for, again, having their faith in me to lead this board. I've been here for a long time. I bring a lot of history here and a lot of knowledge that I plan to use, especially with our new board members, and to guide them from what I've learned over the past 20 years here. You know, it's kind of funny, when I first got on the board, it was all about redistricting, and that's what motivated me to run for the board. And I had one daughter in preschool and the other daughter in kindergarten. I now have one daughter who graduated from college four years ago, and one who's finishing her graduate degree up in May in college. So that means one thing, I'm really old. But again, I thank the voters for their confidence in me, and I also, tonight, would like to thank our teachers, our staff, for everything that they do. They make this district what it is. They are there day in and day out. Many of us don't realize what our teachers face every day, just in the requirements from the state of New Jersey for all the documentation and everything they have to do on the backside. The day doesn't end at 2:20 or 3:20 or 2:50, it goes on. Teachers leave school and they go home and they start working again, and a lot of times we forget that, and I really want to thank them for everything they do. They're the foundation of our school system. I'd also like to thank our administration. A lot of times administrators get no recognition, except when things go wrong, then everybody's yelling and screaming. But when things are going good, and we've had that, things have been going good in this district for a long time, and that's because of Dr. Toback's leadership. As said at one of our last meetings, he is our longest-serving superintendent in the history of the Wayne schools, and that says something. When I got on this board, there was a revolving door of superintendents. We couldn't keep anybody. We found a good person. We found somebody who has great vision and is shaping the future of this district and continues to challenge and move ahead, challenge the board with new opportunities for our students, and it is so refreshing. And I thank him, I thank his staff, our business office, who is exceptional, who year after year after year is giving awards for the great job that they do in keeping us in a really good financial position, which is very difficult in today's world. Again, I thank everybody for coming tonight. I look forward to a great year coming up as we move forward. We have a lot of things that we need to deal with very quickly. It's a new page in the book, and we turned the book, we're writing a new chapter this year, and we're going to write a chapter that all of you in this town will be proud of. I thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Wendtak? Thank you, everyone. Good night.